Been duly called and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. It is 601. If you would, stand with me as Dr. Brown leads us in our invocation and Mr. Kidd leads us in our pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Our Heavenly Father, we're so grateful to you for all the things that you enable us to do for the opportunity to serve. We pray that as we serve, that we will understand the full meaning of public service, that we've been appointed and not anointed, that we need to be responsible to the citizens, to administration, to the students, to the faculty, for making good decisions. Help us to do that, give us good judgment. Guide us, help us to not have any hidden agendas, but to be open, transparent in everything that we do. These things we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Dr. Brown, Kidd. Item 2A, Dr. Stockton, Special District Recognition. 2014 UIL Class 5A Boys Long Jump Champion.
I'd like to ask Tommy Johnson, Principal of Oak Ridge High School, to come to the podium to introduce our special guest.
Mr. Huskins, Dr. Stockton, and members of the board, we could not be prouder of our state's champion in the long jump, Tremaine Jefferson. Tremaine has done a fantastic job this year and a lot of the credit goes to his coach. And at this time, I would like to introduce the hit track coach at Oak Ridge High School, Davis Hueston.
Dr. Stockton School Board and the rest of the audience, it's a great pleasure to be here and be able to recognize Tremaine. He's a tremendous athlete, great guy to have on the team, and the best thing was about, he's just such a team player. We hear so much about the long jump, but this year was actually his first year to long jump, which makes it pretty special. Last year, they were a little deeper into the basketball playoffs and so we didn't get him out very long, so he was just high jumping, just running a little bit, and he had also suffered a little injury and was in a cast, so he couldn't do some certain things there. So over the break, we'd kind of talked him into wanting to long jump and do some things like that. His first meet, he went, he jumped, and then by his jaws kind of dropping, he looks around, he's like, what just happened? He wasn't real sure how far he actually went the first time. But his very first jump ever was at that meet was 22 feet and a quarter of an inch, which is further than most people will ever jump in their life. And then he continued to win six meets straight, including the state meet, and broke our school record by 19 inches. A school that's been around for 30 years broke it by 19 inches. And also, I would like to recognize his coach, the long jump coach, which is Peter Hurchin, who's officially a volunteer coach for us.
Stand up, come on up.
I get the honor of talking to you, but he's a little, probably deserves a lot more credit of what he did. Did he want to say, real quick word?
My biggest thing I've noticed about Tremaine is how much he's grown throughout the season. I got to see him during the basketball season and didn't get to know him as well as I did with basketball. But with track, it's amazing how much he really is a professional, the way that he conducts himself. And one thing, when he went to the state track meet, I heard him say this to another one of his teammates, he heard some other guys playing some music and he's like, man, you gotta watch what you're listening to, you gotta watch what people are looking because there's college coaches everywhere. And I got to see firsthand, when he took his visit to LSU, just how professionally he looked, just the way that he conducted himself, and I was extremely proud of the way that he is on and off of the track.
Thank you.
Tremaine Jefferson would come up, and he has signed a track scholarship with the University of Houston.
Congratulations.
Just to put it in perspective, it is further than that podium is to that podium, 24 feet, so he jumped longer than that.
Congratulations. Appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
Congratulations, great job.
Congratulations.
Thank you for all you do.
Good job. Good discovery, too.
Thank you, Justin. Appreciate it. Congratulations. Just saw an article in the paper about character, so we appreciate that young man's character as much as we do his talent. Item 2B, Dr. Stockton, Special District Recognition, Custodial and Maintenance Department employees.
I'm very excited about this item. We've got great employees who do wonderful things every day, so our students and our adults have great environments, and I'm just so proud of all of them. So it's my pleasure to introduce Marshall Schrader, who's the Director of Custodial Maintenance.
Dr. Stockton, members of the board, it's my pleasure to present the ambassador recipients for the Maintenance and Custodial Department tonight. These five employees represent the highest degree of service to Conro ISD, administrators, staff, students, and community. Please come forward to be recognized as I call your name. From North Maintenance, Rocio Salinas Carranza. Rocio's been with the district since November of 2000. He's the grounds crew leader. His coordinator is John Brown. He's a dedicated employee that's always willing to help others, always come to work with a positive attitude, ready for another day. From North Custodial?
Just stay right there.
Jose Grimaldo? Jose's been with the district since October 1998. He's a day custodian at Grangerland. Coordinator Rodney Shelton. Jose is a dedicated, hardworking, and always willing to do whatever is necessary to fulfill the custodial needs of the district. From South Maintenance, Edgar Perez. Edgar's been with the district since May of 2010. He's an HVAC lead technician. Coordinator is Mark Fries. Edgar's a great employee who is always available and works hard to make sure the HVAC systems in common are always in working order. From South Custodial, Gloria Martinez. Gloria's been with us since August of 2012. She's a Level 1 Evening Custodian at Tom Cops. Coordinator is Sidney Strong. She's a dependable, hardworking employee that represents our department and our district well. Also from South Custodial, Lisa Carver. Lisa's been with the district since November of 2010. She works out of our South office. She handles our facility rentals, interacting with the community and campus administrators to coordinate facility rentals throughout the district. Thank you.
On behalf of the board and the entire district, thanking you so much for everything that you do for Conro ISD, for just making a wonderful facilities and everything, and you really are truly an asset to the district, and we're very, very thankful, grateful for your service.
We really appreciate you and what you do.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you for all you do.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you for doing a good job.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, everyone.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you for doing a good job.
Thank you for your hard work. Appreciate you.
Thank you for your service.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I miss how you on the phone, but I hope.
Okay, Item 2C, Dr. Stockton, Special District Recognition. We've got some Assistant Principals of the Year in the room.
We do. And to introduce those recipients, we have Dr. Gibson, Elementary Education Assistant Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education, Curtis Knoll.
Good evening, Mr. Huskins, board members, and Dr. Stockton. It's my honor to introduce to you Mrs. Teresa Waller, who was one of our Assistant Principals at Grangerland Intermediate, who was named Assistant Principal of the Year by the Texas Elementary Principals and Supervisors Association, commonly known as TEPSA for Region 6. This is a peer-based award that recognizes Assistant Principals who have demonstrated outstanding leadership. And Mrs. Waller was recognized at the TEPSA Awards Reception on June 11th at the Austin's Renaissance Hotel. Mrs. Waller is a graduate of Conro High School and has been Assistant Principal at Grangerland for eight years. In 2006, she was also named Elementary Teacher of the Year at San Jacinto Elementary. She is currently our summer school principal at Grangerland, and I can personally attest to her dedication and her perpetual positivity. Please join me in honoring Mrs. Teresa Waller.
Each year, the Texas Association of Secondary School Principals, or TASSP, recognizes outstanding principals and assistant principals from the 20 regional education service centers in the state. I'm proud to say that once again, the Region 6 Assistant Principal of the Year hails from Conro ISD. Paula Nicolini has enjoyed a very diverse 27-year educational career, working with kindergarteners all the way up through college students. She has spent the last four years in Conro ISD, serving as an Assistant Principal at Conro High School. Students, teachers, and parents appreciate her high energy level, passion, and unwavering belief that her students will be successful. She played an integral part in the successful first year that the Conro High School 9th Grade Campus enjoyed. Now, one thing I must mention is that Ms. Nicolini will not be able to defend her title as Assistant Principal of the Year next year, because next year she will be serving as the principal at Hawk High School for us, so that's a great thing for her. Please join me in congratulating our Region 6 TASSP Assistant Principal of the Year, Ms. Paula Nicolini.
So I just have to say before these ladies leave the stage that we all know that principals get all the glory for when their schools do the best and are the best, and Conro ISD has some great principals, but we also have some really great assistant principals who do a lot of the dirty work, and they work very hard, so we're very appreciative of what they do for us and our students.
We do have a wealth of talent. Ms. Nicolini, did you start when you were 12? 27 years? 27 years?
Wow.
Okay. Ms. Ferris, do we have anyone registered?
Yes, we do.
Very good. The next 30 minutes have been designated for public participation by patrons who have signed up to address the board in accordance with Board Policy BED. Please remember that the board may not discuss or act on any issues that are not posted on our agenda. The board has adopted complaint policies that are designed to secure, at the lowest administrative level, a prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns. These policies provide that if a resolution cannot be reached administratively, the person may appeal the administrative decision to the board as a properly posted agenda item. Copies of the district's complaint policies can be found on the district's website. Those who have registered to address the board will be limited to five minutes for their presentation. Delegations of five or more must appoint one representative to represent their views to the board. Mrs. Ferris, would you please call the first person that signed up to address the board?
Taylor Kapp.
To the Board of Trustees of Conro ISD, my name is Taylor Kapp, CEO and co-founder of KNL Facility Advisors. I'm here today to address the vote for Section 4, titled Administration, Subsection B, titled LED Lighting retrofit project, being considered for funding this evening. I am here after exhausting all informal attempts with regards to the facts pertaining to this project this evening being overlooked. I am here to ensure for public record, as my opinion, a minimum of $619,410.70 may be spent unnecessarily in reference to the LED lighting retrofit, and an extra spend of utilities of over $26,000 annually over the following 10 years. Also, the board need be aware that all criteria has been met pertaining to the fixture schedules being presented. KNL Facility Advisors is a manufacturing rep agency of a publicly traded company, Orion Energy Systems, established in 1996. Orion Energy Systems has installed over 10,000 facilities and is a $100 million company possessing 64 patented or pending patents of energy efficiency technology. I want to make sure the facts are presented for public record, so a sound decision can be made for the taxpayer dollars being requested for the district. Let me explain. I have both a letter from Orion Energy Systems confirming their support and concerns to the above. The CEO of Orion sent two portions of the letter that I will discuss to Conro ISD dated June 10th, 2014. From the CEO, I have been in contact with our independent sales agency, KNL Facility Advisors. They informed me that the recommendation is to contract with a vendor, Extralight, which is $617,000 higher than the Orion and KNL Facility Advisor proposal. It is our understanding that your primary critical issue is to provide an upgrade for the school district from T-12 lighting to solid-state LED lighting. LED lighting is more sustainable and longer-lasting to permanently reduce energy consumption, and is eligible for utility incentives expiring this year for T-12s. Most importantly, you wish to ensure that professional services and technologies are completed without disruption to the classroom within a specified timeframe of November 15th, 2014. More specifically, a team was formed to evaluate several vendors. Brookstone, DBR, and Conro ISD Planning and Construction. Bidders were to complete their bids and deliver them to Brookstone by 2:00 PM Thursday, June 5th, at which time the bids would be read aloud for public record. Bids were as follows. Pinnacle Inlight, $4.15 million. Orion, $2.872 million. Extralight, $3.49 million. Bidders were then dismissed and told that Brookstone would be in contact with the committee's selection within a few days to present at the upcoming board meeting this evening. Following is my understanding of the communication to our sales agency from the three key players on the committee for the project and timeline in their own summary. Brookstone, it has been decided to go with Extralight because Orion's labor was too low and was a concern, along with other fixtures was light better. Conro ISD, KNL Facility's labor was too low and hence considered risky due to bond rate of over 3.5% per assumed calculation. Stated it was a red flag because we did not have a traditional housing, and just attaching a traditional housing over a fixture would create a heat concern. In response to these concerns, Conro ISD will reconsider the KNL proposal. Orion Energy Systems, Inc., a publicly traded company with a bond rating of 1.125%, will provide installation services directly for the Conro ISD project. This will address the concerns about installation, as Orion has successfully completed over 10,000 project installs. The proposed Orion solution, as you well listed, specifically meets the criteria for attachment to a traditional housing, and even with this configuration, the LM79 certification rates the life of 187,000 hours. The superior performance of the Orion product, 21% more efficient compared to the Extralight product, 40 watts versus 45 watts, will generate approximately $26,159 annually in savings over the Extralight fixture. We have attached documentation that I can present as well. Given that it appears all requirements were met by KNL Facility Advisors on the alternate fixture schedule with our industry-leading line of Orion technology, and Orion has provided a bond rate of 1.125% as presented in this letter, you should be comfortable in proceeding with a KNL bid. A solution that is $617,000 lower, the upfront savings and the estimated $26,159 annual or energy savings will provide a significant enhancement to your capital and energy budget this year and for years to come. Why would the Conro ISD purposely choose a more expensive product that is less efficient when a superior product can be installed by a world-class company that is fully bonded with resources to support 100% success? I will also add, in my own words, there is a potential of savings of an additional $306,940 that has not been discussed. $15,347 fixture schedules, as Orion had to add $20 per fixture to it for an unnecessary housing the taxpayers already purchased years prior, and can be reused versus disposed of wastefully without implications to the specified performance criteria. In conclusion, if the board can recommend a continuance in special meeting, I believe the correct decision will be made for the taxpayers of the district. $619,000 plus $306,000 of $26,000 over 10 years' minimum annually in energy reduction I urge the board to be fiscally responsible for their district's citizens. Thank you, Taylor Kapp.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Item 3, the consent agenda. You've had this for a week. Heard no requests to remove an item, so I would entertain a bid.
I'll move.
A motion and a second.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. This is unanimously. Item 4A, Dr. Stockton, approve of school mascots for Patterson Elementary and Stewart. I'm sorry. I apologize. Moving, we're gonna move Item 8A up. That is the Human Resource Report, naming a principal for Austin Elementary. Dr. Stockton, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Huskins. It's always my pleasure to bring recommendations for principals to the board for your consideration. I'm very excited to recommend a person that will be new to us. I'd like to recommend Dr. Serena Pearson for the principal position of Austin Elementary School.
Motion. I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Therefore, everybody signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign. Congratulations.
Good evening, Mr. Huskins, Dr. Stockton, and the Board of Trustees. I would like to thank you all for the opportunity to join the Conro ISD family. I am excited to serve the students, staff, and community of Austin Elementary. Here supporting me tonight is my husband, David Pearson.
You would stand?
And I also have a 13-year-old son who decided on a water balloon fight with his friend over blood.
I don't mind.
Lost that battle, but thank you again for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Say your son hello.
Absolutely. Hope he wins that fight. Very good. Item 4A, Dr. Stockton, approval of school mascots for Patterson and Stewart Elementary.
Okay, we're back again this month for your approval for the mascots for Patterson Elementary and Stewart Elementary, and I'll ask Dr. Gibson to present that item again.
Good evening, Mr. Huskins, board members, and Dr. Stockton. We are seeking your approval this evening for the nominations for our campus mascots for Charlie Patterson Elementary and Gene Stewart Elementary. We presented these mascots in May. The Patterson Elementary Pumas and the Stewart Elementary Mustangs. We're seeking your approval at this time.
I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion. Second?
Second.
Very good. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Passed unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Gibson. And congratulations, Dr. Stewart and Mr. Patterson. Item 4B, LED lighting retrofit project. Dr. Stockton?
I'll ask Eazy Foster to come to the podium to present that item.
Mr. Huskins, Dr. Stockton, members of the board, it's my pleasure tonight to bring forward for your approval and guarantee maximum price for a lighting retrofit project. The proposal for the lighting retrofit project was advertised twice according to our procurement guidelines. Competitive seal proposals were accepted by Brookstone Construction, our construction manager at risk. After receiving the proposals, verification of the pricing specs, proposed cost for the project came to $4,342,433. Funds for this project have been allocated in the general fund. The purpose of this project is to replace aging T-12 fluorescent fixtures with LED light fixtures. T-12 components are being phased out of production, and as these fixtures fail, our district has a choice to retrofit with either T8 fluorescent ballast and lamps, or go with an LED option. A full fixture LED option has been selected based on extensive research, full-scale mockups, engineering input, and return on investment calculations. It's important to note that the return on investment calculation, based on the GMP here, is 3.8 years. This project includes approximately 17,500 fixtures, and the end result will yield a significant energy savings, decreased lifecycle costs because of fixtures we're proposing, and as well, all the fixtures that we took proposals on included a 10-year parts and labor warranty. The project also adds user-adjustable lighting controls at the affected classroom campus locations. At this time, I would like to ask for your approval for this project.
Okay. I hear a motion?
I tell you what, I'm gonna make a motion so we can...
We do need a motion to discuss in a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Brown?
Yes, I'd like for Eazy to answer or respond to the issues raised by our person. Mr. Kelp?
Kelp.
Kelp.
I'd be happy to address some specific decision-making criteria.
Okay.
Because I wasn't taking notes while he was reading, so... But we did go through an extensive process, and I brought my engineering team today to help talk about some more technical details if we get that deep. We have mockups at Conro High School from several manufacturers. Orion is one of the manufacturers represented at Conro High School. The lighting, as it's installed over there, when you compare manufacturer to manufacturer, just as an impression walking in the room, from our maintenance staff, which includes Marshall and his group, my staff, our engineering staff, and people that walked in rooms, the preference was not for the Orion fixture, just on normal perception. I'll let my engineers talk about the technical differences between the light fixtures, because it can get pretty deep in the weeds. On bid day, I mean, because on June 5th, the day that he said we collected bids in Brookstone's office. And it is important to note that the guidelines that we procure construction with require us to make decisions on the information provided at the time the public bid was opened. The bonding rate that he mentioned from Orion directly was given to us after the bid, not during the bid. The bid rate that he mentioned, the 3.5% calculation, was the bid he turned in in his competitive seal proposal. Their labor rate, the labor, and it's important to note, there's many moving parts in a project such as this. The labor that he had elected is the installation of the fixtures and the occupancy sensors and the dimming controls themselves. We had three manufacturers bring three installers to the table. All three manufacturers on the fixture themselves were priced in a competitive fashion. The fixture that was, that the whole program was designed around, which is a manufacturer that we're very familiar with, and we use their fixtures in our district now, came in the highest. Extralight was in the middle. Our Extralight was the lowest-priced fixture, and Orion was in the middle on the fixture price. The installation price is the difference in the bids. Pinnacle are designed, the manufacturer, everything was designed around, and Extralight are very close to each other in their installation price, right at just a hair over a million dollars in installation. dollars in installation. Orion's installation costs, they presented on bid day, were under five hundred thousand dollars with a called-out value for their performance payment bond. When we did the math on the called-out value of their performance payment bond, it put their bonding rate at three-and-a-half percent, which, from a contractor perspective, anything over two percent is called into question.
Right.
Extra Light's bonding rate was given to us as a percentage rate at one and three-quarters percent, and Pinnacle was at two-point-five percent. So on the data we had on the day the bids were opened, is the decision, is where we made the decision, the risk at an installer that is half of what is competitive, or actually more than, less than half of what his competition was, calls into its own question, do they have the entire scope? Even if they were to supply a bond, I still question, do they have the entire scope? Clearly, something is different. So, based on choosing the least expensive fixture with a competitive install rate at a favorable bonding rate is how we arrived at the decision we made.
And after all this, you're still pretty comfortable with the decision?
We are absolutely comfortable with the decision. Extra Light is a company that's been doing projects like this for schools, for colleges, and they've been doing business in and out of Houston for over twenty-eight years. They have the longevity to attest to the ten-year parts and labor warranty as well as standby their installation.
How long has Mr. Kelp's company been in business?
Ninety-six, I believe.
The paperwork that I've got...
Ninety-six?
Well, Orion has been involved in ninety-six, I believe. How long is...
Eighteen years.
I mean, I can't speak how long KNL Facility Advisors has been in business.
Well, can we have the engineer to speak briefly?
Sure. Brian?
Can both, go ahead. You just stay up there, though.
Let me make sure I...
I have some more questions.
Yeah, one second.
Sure.
EZ. So, the fixture itself, the light, I guess the actual parts were pretty competitive or mid, it was mid-level?
Well, uh...
They were. It's the labor that caused us the heartburn.
Labor is the giant differential.
Okay, okay.
In your opinion...
Let me digest that. Go ahead, go ahead.
In your opinion, is there any drawback to using the old fixture versus the new? Just independent of everything else, is there any drawback to that, or is there rust on them, or are they gonna wear out center? I mean, I...
That was the housing, right?
You're stripping all the ballast off, right? I mean, all that's history, right?
Well, the way the Orion fixture is installed, the ballast doesn't necessarily have to come out of the housing. It can remain because their system fits in.
Fits in?
Yes.
Okay. So, in your opinion, is there any drawback to using, I mean, and if this is an engineering question, forgive me, but if it's not, is there any drawback to using the existing fixture versus a new one?
Well, I can speak from a layman's point of view, but I'd like to have an engineer to answer that.
That's fair. Now, one other thing, you know, in the bid bond business, okay? If there is a difference in bid of more than a certain percent, they get a bid tab and they have to report back the winner if they're lower than by a certain amount, okay? And all you're doing is judging people based upon that same situation. So what you're saying, in essence, is you had concerns that they could finish the job for the amount that they quoted.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And Brian, if you wouldn't mind, we can address the fixture. The team that's coming up now is Brian Jenkins, who's a partner with DBR Engineering, the engineering firm that designed the plans that we took bids on, and he's got with him one of his associates, the design engineer, Adam Jones. So, this would be Brian Jenkins.
Hi, Brian, welcome.
Hi, thank you. The fixture that we're talking about, we actually specified a actually brand-new fixture. What has been submitted is a retrofit-type fixture, meaning, that's why he had brought up about using the existing housing and coming in with a retrofit. They do a lot of retrofits all over the country, but what we got with the maintenance, we reviewed that type of fixture, and it was decided to go with a brand-new fixture. So, in our opinion, the retrofit fixture is not even equal to the other two that were submitted on.
Okay.
If we were wanting to go just with the retrofit, and that's what maintenance and facilities was looking for, we would have had different competition for them, some that's very similar. The fixtures that, the fixtures they submitted is not equal, in our opinion, to the fixtures that we have on our documents.
Just like, briefly, what are advantages and disadvantages of retrofit versus...
Retrofit is a much quicker installation. You're not getting a new fixture, you're getting a retrofit kit which attaches to the bottom of the fixture. So, for them to make it a fixture, they decided to go ahead and supply a housing to make it like a fixture, but you still have the retrofit kit with the housing, it's two components, not just one. You get a fixture, there's one component, and in the retrofit, there's two, a housing and a kit.
And what does the one value that the two doesn't, or what does it value?
Well, what we're concerned with the maintenance is you're trapping the heat between the housing and this kit. The components are mounted above, they have aluminum on the top, and then you have a steel housing. In between that, you're getting heat. That's what our concern was.
Okay.
And we're also very...
Those concerns, what are they? Are they safety concerns, or are they energy concerns?
We're concerned about the length of lifetime.
I thought there was a warranty associated with it.
There's a ten-year parts and labor.
But even though it's a ten-year parts and labor, these fixtures are designed to last ten years. I mean, way, way beyond.
Twenty years at least.
Right. And so, the ten-year warranty, you're saying, you know, so they're under warranty for ten, but it might affect the ten-to-twenty-year period because of this heat trap?
That's correct.
Okay. Makes sense.
So, is this a million dollars, I mean, is...
Six hundred thousand.
Six hundred thousand?
Yeah, and we're also, like EZ had mentioned, very concerned about the labor rate. We want to make sure they have it in their documents. It came to about, I believe, twenty dollars a fixture, and not only do we have the fixtures being changed out, we've got dimming controls and occupancy sensors in each of the classrooms. So there's a lot more than just changing out a fixture.
Okay, but one last question. You had earlier said it's a much easier retrofit.
If you're gonna retrofit.
And so, is that a partial explanation for their difference in labor?
That might have been what they priced, but that's not what's on our documents.
Well, okay, and then the second part of the question would be, you said that the competition would have changed. You know, instead of the two companies offsetting the bid here, you know, or the three companies that bid, you would have them with two or three other companies that happened to do retrofit?
Do the same exact thing.
But you made the decision, it did not fit specs?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm...
Correct. We actually, we called out for a pinnacle lighting and also the extra light. We did not have in the specification that the Orion fixture wasn't equal. They submitted the price, we evaluated it.
I'm gonna ask you to speculate here. Assuming that that would have been an apples-to-apples bid there, do you think the pricing would have been, how far out of the water do you think Orion's product would have been? Would they have been just as competitive, or is that what we're assuming here? Because they're comparing totally...
When you're talking, if the fixtures weren't part of the equation, if everybody was apples-to-apples to question, I...
Yes.
And it was just based on the labor rate, we would have three bidders, two of them relatively competitive with each other, one of them fifty percent plus lower than the other two. And that's what Mr. Husbands was speaking to in the bonding, bid bond performance category. You have to, that one calls themselves out as an anomaly and would be suspect.
And let me just go one step further. If it's too far, the bond company won't provide the performance bond, but I'm not saying that it is. I'm just saying, if that distance is too far, they'll refuse to bond the job. That's how important it is.
Correct. I mean, so generally speaking, if it's more than ten percent difference, we start to really dig in and ask questions. At this point, we're greater than fifty percent difference on that scope.
I'd like to hit...
Go ahead. No, go ahead. I've got, go ahead.
I'd like to give Mr. Kelp's rebuttal to that, those arguments.
Well, I would like to point out, too, any rebuttal that he's got at this point is reinformation received after the bid date.
Fair enough.
Which, I mean, by our state laws, I can't...
Go ahead, you are it. My question then, did they meet the specs for the bid?
They did.
Kelp's group meet the specs for the bid?
Their bid would have been, if there were no, if all things were equal, their bid would have only been accepted as a voluntary alternate. It was not a designed and pre-approved substitution to our specifications.
And now that we have it, and I'm perfectly comfortable that it doesn't meet specs, okay? I got that. But now that we've seen it, and now that we know there's six hundred thousand dollars sitting on the table, okay? Just to be perfectly clear, and it ain't a matter of pride, okay? Are we comfortable sticking with our original gun? I mean, we've already made that decision not to go with a retrofit, are we still comfortable with making that, with that decision? And I mean, across the, you know, from Ian to Marshall to you to whoever's on the committee?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, because the project is more complicated than just swapping out two-by-four light fixtures. Take the Woodlands High School, for instance, there's approximately two thousand fixtures in the Woodlands High School. A majority of those fixtures are one-by-four light fixtures. So, to put in a two-by-four fixture in its place requires some additional time and effort, work effort. I can't speak to whether or not their installer picked those type of details up, but two thousand fixtures that require additional time and effort may be the difference in their bid price.
Okay, but let me come back to it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, regardless of the labor, let's just say we threw everything out and started over again tomorrow, and I'm not insinuating that we should or could, I'm asking you.
No, I would...
All things considered?
All things considered.
Do we need to stay with the new fixture, or can we do it, or should we look at retrofits again?
For the needs of our district and the, with the input of our maintenance department, which Marshall's nodding his head in affirmation, we would absolutely make the decision to put in a new fixture in this type of situation.
Thank you. Any other questions, gentlemen?
I'd still like to, yeah, they're all the same with the board.
Is that...
It's really not appropriate to have engagement in a debate, you know? I mean, he's presenting the facts. If you all would like additional information, we could, you know, table the item and get the information to you, but it's, it isn't...
I didn't, I didn't think so, so, anyway, any other discussion? Just real quick, you are saying that Marshall over there is nodding his head in agreement, just can we hear from him as well?
Sure.
As to what?
I agree. Well, with the same, all the circumstances, I would still make the decision, go with a new fixture. I think there is a consideration for the heat load. All there's a ten-year warranty, labor and parts and labor warranty. We spoke with a twenty-year. The LED fixture itself, there's two parts, there's LED bulbs itself, and then there's a driver. The LED portion is what's gonna take the hit for the additional heat that's built up into that fixture. The new fixture is designed to dissipate that heat through the top of the fixture.
Very good, thank you. Ms. Powell, kid. Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Okay, for all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. Very good, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. And I would just like to point out, I do appreciate the tough questions, so, thank you.
We'll keep asking.
Careful what you ask for. All right, item four C, Dr. Stockton, bond referendum update?
It's a good chance for some tough questions now. Bond update, Mr. Foster?
Well, we have taken the liberty to rename this segment Capital Improvement Updates. We're starting to get into projects that we have allocated from fund balance rather than two thousand and eight bond referendum money. So, rather than lump them all as bond improvements, they are, these are capital improvements. So, starting with what we've got going on at Oak Ridge Ninth Grade Campus, this, if you'll recall, we've approved a GMP to add twelve classrooms or four lab spaces at this, or ten classrooms and four lab spaces at this campus. As you can see right now, we've started the interior demolition for the summer critical projects, so don't go in there today. That being said, the summer critical area is to get the cafeteria expansion done so that we can house more student population and feed them in a timely manner, and then they're working through the front of the admin, doing an admin reconfiguration so we get ready to change the front door appearance of that campus. Those things are happening this summer so that we can get prepared to do the major structures over the course of the school year.
You said appearance, but it's really safety, right?
Well, safety is a factor, but we are giving...
I mean, it will look different.
Yeah, ultimately, we're giving Oak Ridge Ninth Grade Campus an identity other than just a brick box. Moving forward, the Oak Ridge School Road Improvement. As you recall, this project is improving Oak Ridge School Road, starting at Interstate Forty-Five and winding through the Oak Ridge Campus back to Hauser Elementary. What you're looking at here is the first boulevard pavement section that is now concrete. It should have opened for traffic this afternoon. So, the boulevard section on the other side, as you enter Oak Ridge Elementary, is being demolished now. Within a couple of weeks, that campus should be restored to full traffic. They are moving around the, if you'll recall, the front of Oak Ridge Elementary was asphalt, so they're replacing all that asphalt with concrete, and they're making their way towards the clinic entrance side of it now. So, within two weeks, we should have unencumbered access through the appropriate direction through the driveways. Right now, they're in a detour direction to get to the clinic. This is a shot looking down towards the Oak Ridge Ninth Grade, where that asphalt roadway has been removed. And then, over the next couple of weeks, you will see approximately thirty-five percent of so of the widening, the paving being placed. There's formwork and steel in place for most of that roadway now. At Vogel Intermediate, we are adding eight classrooms there. You're looking at a picture here of the building underground where the building pad is currently in. These pictures were taken last week. So, the building pad is in place, the underground utilities are in place, the foundation, drilled and under-reamed foundations are in place now. What you're looking at are the preparations for the concrete floor to do the fire lane improvement for fire truck access to the back of the school and the building slab for the classroom addition. At Knox Junior High, we still haven't painted the van yet, but Knox is entering its summer phases of work, so the crews are spread throughout that building now. It is progressing as scheduled. We are into phase eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve of a twelve-phase project, so that is going on this summer. As you know, along with Knox, we're doing various chiller replacements, chiller upgrades. The work for Canyon Creek High School is underway now, replacing two chillers at Canyon Creek High School. And then at McCullough, they've started working on the air conditioning upgrades and the lighting retrofit to the block auditorium. So, we're in the process of changing the block auditorium house lighting from the original installation to an LED fixture in the end. That is separate from the LED project that was just approved a moment ago. That Knox project is on schedule, and all those projects are scheduled to be open before school starts in the fall. The multi-campus front door or front entry security upgrade, which was approved at the board meeting last month, what you're seeing here is a representation of all, we're affecting the front doors of twenty-four campuses. This is at DeSinger Elementary School. You'll see, what you'll see is a representation of, at the front door of each school, moving up, you'll see a call box and a card reader on the right-hand side of the door at each of the schools that have been affected. At this point, half of the twenty-four campuses have been wired. They are going back now to those first half and installing all the hardware to go with the wiring, so if the schedule holds the way it appears to be holding, we should be doing our pre-functional testing on these doors, fronts, well before school starts, so we should be able, we should have the option to go live or do a scaled rollout of these campuses as the time school begins for the fall. The multi-campus skylight project, which affects David Anderson DeSinger and campuses of that vintage, you can see we are eliminating the skylights down the hallways, down the grade hallways, and then the skylights over the main part of the library and the gymnasium in those buildings. You can see from the inside, this isn't a finished product, but this is a midstream finish, so we've got a good hard ceiling. The next step of this project is in improving the lighting in those areas so that we don't have the dark spots. At Travis Intermediate, you recall, this one, we are replacing the exterior masonry on the two oldest structures there. The pictures now will show you masonry going up the side of the auditoriums, they're moving, those will be complete very soon, and the demolition crews are now on the backside of that building, working over on the library section. So, in the next couple of weeks, they will be back around to the front side, working along the facade, along the storefront. That project is moving as we planned, even with the rain we've had recently, they've been able to make up their time. This is just a shot of that same, the inside of the auditorium, so where we've got everything raised up from the inside. got everything raised up from the inside. And that are the, those are the major projects we have on the construction in the current year.
Questions of Foster?
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item five A, Dr. Stockton, uh, preliminary two thousand fourteen, fifteen proposed budget.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask Dan Cox, our Chief Financial Officer, to come present the preliminary two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen proposed budget.
Mr. Hosmans, members of the board, Dr. Stockton, I'm pleased to present the preliminary budget information for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen budget. Uh, the theme of this year's budget, uh, is that we, is providing a strong foundation for education and growth. Uh, we find ourselves in a position to, uh, we think strengthen our, our foundation of our school and, uh, uh, be better prepared for not only this coming year, but future years after that. The, uh, first thing that I want to talk about is, uh, the certified property values. Uh, we have a ru, an amazing increase in property values this year. Uh, you can see here that we're currently use, projecting a three billion dollar increase in assessed values. This is about twelve and a half percent. Uh, we, we had, we do not have the final numbers, but, uh, we could actually even see a, uh, some slight increase over this. But, uh, this is both a good and a bad situation. Uh, it is going to result in a significant, uh, increase in revenues this coming year, but it brings back into play something that we haven't really had to deal with for a number of years, and that's the Robin Hood effect. And I'm going to talk more about that later in the presentation because it's something that we really need to keep in mind as we look at this year's budget. Uh, we've, the Robin Hood effect has been somewhat masked ever since the, the legislature restructured school funding in two thousand seven and put in place target revenue, and then a few years ago, they, they reinstituted the funding that they had cut a few years prior to that. Both of those items together really took the Robin Hood effect out of play, but it is now back in, in play one hundred percent. And with an increase like this, it puts us in a position of seeing a big impact the year after that. And I'll talk more about that later, but, but we, as we look at this budget, we need to keep in mind that, uh, Robin Hood effect is back in play, and, and I'm going to talk more about that and explain it as I go through here. Uh, but obviously, assessed values are up, which is going to have a very positive effect in this coming year. Uh, attendance, another, the other key driver of our funding, uh, once again, for the second or third year in a row, we're projecting eleven hundred. Uh, you can see that we have been trending slightly down the last few years, but we really think that's, that situation is bottoming, and, uh, we could see a turnaround, uh, in, in enrollment, both either this year or the fi, in, in the next few years. So we think that we're probably at the low point right now, uh, but we are using eleven hundred for our budget, uh, and expect, uh, that to be a solid number. As we, uh, approached our budgeting, we developed, uh, specific objectives for this year's budget, the fourteen, fifteen budget. One was to meet the needs, uh, for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year. We wanted to provide a strong salary increase for C I S D employees, wanted to provide a tax decrease, tax rate decrease for our C I S D patrons. And then, as I mentioned before, we want to preserve funding for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen budget because there will be a Robin Hood effect. We don't know exactly what, what it'll be at this time, but we do know there'll be a Robin Hood effect. And I'll talk more about that, uh, as I go. Looking at the two thousand fourteen, fifteen funding estimate, uh, as I said, we're going to see a substantial increase in revenue in this first year. Uh, we're looking at a, a projected revenue increase of forty-seven point eight million. That's coming from the seventeen million dollar surplus that we have in the current year, which I want to point out, we, we preserved, we used the, the one, the, the, the current year surplus to build the ninth grade, Oak Ridge Ninth Grade Expansion out of cash rather than use bond debt. Uh, and then that money was, is available to us again in this coming year. So that money is not going away because it has not been impacted by the Robin Hood effect. In addition, uh, because of the increased assessed value, we're seeing an additional revenue for, uh, of twenty-seven point three million, coming from the twelve point five percent A V increase and the eleven hundred A D increase, uh, A D A. And then the state has instituted a new one point five percent contribution to T R S to really address the underfunded pension issues, so they're increasing the contribution. This year, the state is, uh, is funding that, so they're providing the funding for that as well. Going forward, they've made no commitment to, to provide that funding. I personally think they will provide it going forward, but we don't know that today, so as we look forward, we can't be assured that that funding will be there. So altogether, all, added all together, we're looking at a forty-seven point eight million dollar increase in revenue this year. So a very strong funding position in fourteen, fifteen. We talked about, uh, our, one of our goals in this budget was to give a strong salary increase to our employees. We think we've done that, our teacher salaries, which have already been approved, uh, we have a starting salary of forty-eight thousand seven hundred, which is very competitive, uh, and we also are giving an eighteen hundred and forty dollar increase to all teachers. Uh, we feel good about teacher salary situation, we think this is very competitive. Obviously, eighty-eight percent of our budget is, is people, salaries and benefits, uh, so people additions and salary increases represent the biggest part of our budget changes. The first line that you see here, these are all our personnel additions. The first line represents what we would normally see in eleven hundred, uh, student growth year, uh, the number of professionals, teachers and other professionals, parents that we'd add, this is seven point eight million. Below that, you see program additions, which are things that we talked about in our budget workshop. These are specific program areas where we saw understaffed situations that we needed to beef up, to not only deal with the coming year, but to deal with future growth as well. Uh, and so these are the additions that we have talked about, and they've put into our budget. Uh, together, these, uh, these result, these, uh, add up to eighty, one hundred and eighty-five point five positions and a total of nine point three million dollars. More detail, uh, the seven point eight million dollars listed above at campuses for student growth, that detail is presented on this slide. Uh, you can see that, uh, we have already begun the process and, in many cases, hired the eighty-seven and a half teachers, uh, at the campuses. Uh, we also have in there nineteen teaching contingency positions, which will not be filled until the students are there and the need is, is clear that we need those. So we don't hire all of those teachers at, at the beginning, we, we reserve these nineteen positions, but I was, I'm confident that if we get the eleven hundred students, they'll be filled. Uh, other professionals are counselors, librarians and nurses, then we have pairs, twenty and a half pairs, administrators, for a total of a hundred and fifty positions in that, uh, uh, in that, at the campus level. In other expenses, again, what we just looked at were some pretty significant increases in both salary, salary increases and, and, uh, personnel additions. You get into other expenses and the numbers aren't that big because, again, eighty-eight percent of our budget is salary and benefits. Uh, we have put in a three hundred thousand increase for utilities, we have seen, uh, we've gone for a number of years where we've been reducing utility costs, even though we've been adding square footage, we've been bringing utility costs down. But we're seeing that turnaround now, uh, we are seeing rate increases for both water and electricity, so we put, uh, we are projecting three hundred thousand increase in utilities. Uh, we have M CAD fees. Actually, uh, Mr. Castle Shoot is here tonight, Mark, are you, what, what have I to say? Mark is, uh, Mark Castle Shoot from the appraisal district is here tonight, uh, to talk to us about another issue, uh, but, uh, they have, uh, as you see from the appraisals, uh, their bus, their activity has increased dramatically and they have some additional costs as well. And this is our allocated share of their budget, which we, we fund. Uh, we have supply, uh, supplies at the campus, uh, this is primarily related to the two new schools that we're opening, but it also includes some allocations to the other schools as well. A fuel, a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Innovative program grants, this is in-house grants for innovative classroom ideas. Uh, this is a program that we, uh, preserves, reserve money for funding of good ideas in the classroom that we hope generate, uh, innovative ideas that can go across the camp, the, the district. Uh, we have some so, projected software purchases. The first one is learning management system, which facilitates online education and assignments. And the second is, uh, a concept of, uh, safety alert software that will allow our employees to quickly, uh, uh, connect with the police dispatch in cases of emergency. Uh, we're evaluating those options, but we have reserved that in the fi, in, in the budget. Uh, and finally, miscellaneous things, insurance, copier, rental and other things, for a total of one million seven hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for other expenses. Summing all these up, uh, we're looking at, uh, preliminary projection of budget increases, a three and a half percent salary increase across the board is ten point two million. Personnel growth, we looked at that for eleven hundred students is seven point eight million. Personnel for program additions is one and a half million. Uh, we're increasing our funding to the health fund, uh, program by a million dollars in them. This has been a real positive thing this year, we've seen an improvement in our health fund, we've, we've completely overhauled our health plan program going forward. We, I, I think this has been a successful story this year. We're going to actually see in most cases, our employees' call, healthcare costs, their, their premiums are going to drop when, when many districts are seeing increases in this area. Uh, we are, uh, we're, we are going, upping our contribution by a million dollars, and we're keeping our fingers crossed that things are going to go well going forward. We think we're going to have a good program, and we think it's going to be very cost effective. Then we have the one and a half percent T R S contribution. Again, uh, we, we won't know until next year whether it's going to be funded in the future by, by the state or by us, but it is a cost increase this year. And then the other expenses of one point seven million that we just talked about, for a total of twenty-five point eight million dollar increase. Our projected budget, we see on the revenue side, uh, in addition to the seventeen million surplus we, uh, had, uh, we have in the current year, we're adding another thirty point eight million, so our revenues are four hundred and sixteen point nine million. Uh, last year's budget was three sixty-nine point one. We're proposing a, uh, three and a half percent salary increase of ten point two million, other expenses of fifteen point six million that we just went through, uh, for a budget of three, three hundred and ninety-four point nine million. This leaves us with a surplus of twenty-two million in the current year. Now, because, um, again, I'm going to go through this, uh, uh, Robin Hood effect, but because of the potential, the uncertainty of coming year of the next year budget and revenue, we're proposing that we, we save this money in the general fund in case we have to access it in the following year. But looking at the budget increase, including the three point five million T R S contribution, it's, it's a seven percent budget increase, if you back that out, it's twenty-two point three million or six percent. Uh, if you look at our budget over the last four years, you can see that our budget has grown sixteen point one percent for, a four-year average of four percent a year, uh, compared to student growth, which is averaged two point four, and inflation, which is averaged two point one, so this is, uh, combined four and a half percent. So we've averaged four percent growth, uh, over the last four years, while student growth and inflation have averaged four and a half percent growth combined. And, and we are wanting to keep below that, uh, on, over an extended period of time. If you look at the four-year average budget increase, it's been approximately fourteen million dollars. It's large this year, uh, we're in position to do it, but, uh, if you look at it over an elapsed period of time, it's a, a reasonable number. I talked about the Robin Hood effect. The, uh, this is my effort to explain that. Uh, the, there's, the general public generally doesn't get, doesn't understand how this works. Uh, they assume that when, when our local assessed values go up and our local taxes go up, the school district ha, gets that money forever going forward. But we do get it the first year, but the next year, it becomes a benefit to the state and not us. And I'll show you how this works. These are actual numbers. Our current year, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen budget, our assessed value is twenty-three point nine billion. That generates local revenue of twenty, two hundred and thirty-six point eight million. Now, we also have state revenue coming in, and there, that's also a, a misunderstanding. Most, most people think that Conroy I S D is a rich district. We are not a rich district, uh, we, and, and the reason, we have a lot of wealth in our district, no question, but we've got fifty-five thousand students, and the way wealth is calculated is it's wealth per student. It's not how much wealth you have, it's how much you have per student. And because we have so many students, we're not considered a wealthy district. Uh, so we still get state funding, but, uh, I'm not going to look at state funding this year, I am the next year, though. But I wanted to show you that that two hundred and thirty, that, that twenty-three point nine billion generates local revenue of two thirty-six point eight million. Now, if we go to the, this next year, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, we saw earlier that our assessed value went up three billion dollars. That generates local revenue of two hundred and sixty-eight million. However, the state calculates their funding for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen year off of our prior year assessed value. So they assume that our assessed value is lower, three billion lower, therefore, they give us more money. They give us a hundred and forty-eight million, so we're projecting, uh, revenue, state revenue next year of a hundred and forty-eight million for a total revenue of four hundred and sixteen million. Now, freeze everything there and assume in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, there is no change in enrollment, no change in A V, and, and these are not going to happen, these things are not going to happen, but to see the effect of the Robin Hood, you freeze it, and, and also assume that there's no change in the state funding formula, there's no, uh, there's no change in the basic allotment, everything stays the same. You look at two thousand fifteen, sixteen to see what would happen, well, we get the same local revenue of two hundred and sixty-eight million, but all of a sudden, the state revenue drops to a hundred and sixteen point eight million because now it's based off of twenty-six point nine billion assessed value. Uh, and all of a sudden, so our four hundred and sixteen revenue drops to three hundred and eighty-five million. The state picks up that thirty-one point two million, so that, that big surge that we're getting this coming year is now transferred to the state, and they have that, those funds become state funds, which are available to, for them to spend, however, you know, which, that, that's where they redistribute the funding at that point. Now, granted, uh, I'm not suggesting in any way that there's, that we're not going to see increases in A V next year, that we're not going to see increases in enrollment, or there won't be changes to the, the, the state funding formula. There will be changes, the state, uh, is almost obligated to adjust the basic allotment every year because that's how districts that aren't benefiting from, from enrollment growth and A V growth, that's where they get the funding to give a salary increase. that's where they get the funding to give a salary increase or to do. They may not hire anybody, but, but they still have to keep up with inflation. And so there will be changes in the, in the funding formula. There will be AV growth. We don't know how much. Now, I will tell you that to the extent that AV doesn't grow at least twelve and a half percent, we're gonna see some, and, and I don't think it will grow twelve and a half percent. I think this was a, an anomaly this year. To the extent that it grows less than twelve and a half percent, there will be some Robin Hood effect to us. So we won't be able to know what our funding will be until we get through this legislative session that's coming up, till we see what our AV is, till we project a new enrollment figure. Those are important things. So what I'm proposing to do with this twenty-two million dollar surplus this year is essentially put it in the bank. Preserve that funding in case we have a situation where we don't, where we are, we do start to see a significant potential reduction in our funding next year versus this year because of the Robin Hood effect. And I put a note in there that the two thousand fifteen Texas legislative session and next year's AV growth, along with enrollment growth, will determine what our funding is. And I think all three of those will be up. It's just, and so we're, we're gonna see some growth in funding. Or not, not necessarily growth in funding, we're gonna see growth in these areas, which will reduce that thirty-one million dollars that's being taken away. Now, it's a question of how much it reduces it. This will determine how much funding we have available to us. But if we got this twenty-two million in the bank, we, we should be able to work through it under any scenario. Yeah, John?
So Mr. Cox, if you, if you had your eleven hundred student growth annually, okay, what would that thirty-one become? I know you've looked at it.
Well, the, the, the basic allotment now is about fifty-six hundred dollars a student. So, so that's six million bucks right there. So if we get eleven hundred, we get six million of that thirty-one back.
And, and that's without any E-growth?
That's right, right.
Which is?
And, and we will get?
Five at a minimum, twelve at high, you know, whatever.
I mean, I think, I think five, three, five, six percent is, is probably a reasonable range.
And five percent of that is worth what?
That's, five percent would be like thirteen million.
Thank you.
Just a general question. I understand what you're saying is we're blessed to have wealth in our district, in our community. As far as a district, we're not necessarily considered a wealthy district because we have so many students. Percentage wise, where, where do we, where do we fall? Are we in the middle or are we?
We, we have been moving up the scale. There's no doubt. We, we do fall into the definition of the first tier of wealthy districts, but it's, we're nowhere near the level where we send money to the state. And we probably never will get there.
Just given our, our population, our student population?
Exactly, yeah. So, so by one definition, we are considered wealthy, but by the one that counts where you, when you have to start sending money, we're not anywhere near there.
Most people think of the Robin Hood effect as those districts who are sending money back to the state. Where it hits us is in the next year funding when it's reduced based on AV.
Yeah, our budget keeps going up, but the state funding keeps going down because we're paying a bigger share of it every year because of our wealth growth. But we're still relying on state funding. And, you know, for them to reduce their funding potentially thirty-one million dollars in one year is a big hit. Now, that's not gonna happen because of these factors we just talked about, but we have to understand that, that it's probably not gonna be twelve and a half percent increase next year. And for us to get all thirty-one million back?
Might be sixteen.
I don't know. What do you think about that, Mr. Castle Shoot?
I have a question for you. Oh, go ahead. We talked at a couple of meetings before about the increase for our non-professional employees. And I didn't hear anything in this report about that, but I had spoken to you after the meeting and you assured me that you guys were considering that. So where did, where did I miss it? Could you?
We, we, there are, I just didn't talk about it. It's a nominal number, but there?
To, to us it's nominal, but not to the people who had effects. So I would really like to hear a little bit more about it.
Well, the thing is, I don't, the four percent, we, we put a minimum four percent in for, for all the campus parents, I believe. Is, is that what we did?
All parent professionals.
Yeah, all parents got four percent.
Got four percent? That's okay, I just wanted to, it's definitely something I'm passionate about, so I wanted to hear it from you on the record.
It's there.
I assume the same for the police officers as well.
There, there was a special adjustment. That, that was done by, actually, I guess, Casper did that.
I was struggling with your terminology, the Robin Hood. We're not giving anything back. They're reducing them out to give them.
Well, yeah, but that's a point.
Money gone.
Well, the reality is, is it's low. We're not getting the benefit of that increase from, in local revenue, is what I'm saying. But the people, the perception of the general public is we get up, we keep all that. We keep it for one year, then the state takes it.
They just reduce the payments after that.
So the state, the state loves to see our assessed values go up because they know that reduces their funding requirements. And then, so, so the state really, in fact, I'm sure Mr. Castle Shoot would tell you, the state forces them to appraise at market value because that's the whole concept of Robin Hood, is you have appraisals across the state. In other words, the, the state doesn't want one district appraising at a hundred percent of market value and another one appraising at fifty percent of market value. They force everybody to appraise at a hundred percent market value. Now, the general public doesn't understand that either because they, they don't understand why their appraisals keep going up. It's because the state has a, has a, has an interest in making sure that everybody appraises at market value.
Is there a separate proposal for your twenty-two million? Or is that part of the budget or do we have to?
What we're proposing is we do nothing with the twenty-two million. That it goes into, say, into the general fund. So that we're gonna see an increase in our general fund. So it's there if we have to access it next year.
So when we approve, when it's proposed, the budget, that's part of it?
Yes. Whereas last year, I made a recommendation that we take that surplus and spend it. I'm making a recommendation this year, because of the Robin Hood effect is back in play, that we hold on to that until we see what happens next year.
Mr. Cox, I mean, for years you have kept us, we're, we are successful financially in large part to your ability to manage these numbers and keep it, and, and I applaud you, okay? So when I, when I ask you these questions, I don't want you to think that I, I, in other words, you hedge for all the right reasons, not the wrong reasons, okay? And I appreciate that. But looking at thirty-one and looking at twenty-two, we're putting twenty-two back and you say, you know, we have a potential risk of thirty-one if we didn't have any AV growth or student growth, okay? But if we have the eleven hundred and we have the five percent, something reasonable, not twelve, not sixteen, not whatever, okay? Then, then you're looking at the difference of, in like, instead of thirty-one, you're looking at the difference like twelve.
Right.
Is that, is that a more?
And, and if we end up there, we're not going to have to access, if we do have to access some of the twenty-two million we put in the bank, it'll just be a very little bit.
A part of it, right. But the other part of it could be used as we always do. Buy down the debt, reduce the tax rate as we have two years in a row, so on and so forth, right? The unknown right now?
We're, we're still preserving the amount that we use to buy down the debt.
What, what, the sixteen? But I'm talking about in addition, whatever, or build a school out of cash or whatever we do.
Yeah, and, and if, if we, once we get to next spring and we know what's gonna happen after, well, we get far enough into legislative session, we know what's gonna happen, we'll, we'll have a much better feel as to whether some of that funding that we've saved is available to use, maybe do something without using debt again or whatever, you know.
Thank you.
Those options will be low. The, the big prize again is the, for the third year in a row, we are going to, we're proposing to reduce the tax rate by a half a cent, bring us to a dollar twenty-eight. This puts us at forty-eight cents below the, the peak at two thousand five, two thousand six. In addition, I, I think it compares very favorably to our peer districts, both in the Mediate area and all across the Houston area. I think we're, I think we can be proud of what we've done and still kept one of the lowest tax rates really in this state, certainly for any fast growth school district.
You have the slide that compares?
Well, we, I will at the next presentation. This is, at the next presentation, we'll have all of that.
We're on average in our peer groups, districts that are similar in size and makeup were on average, I think, seventeen cents lower.
So, we're, we're proud to be able to do this again for the third year in a row. What's next? Again, as, as I indicated earlier, we'll get the local certified AV on July twenty-fifth. That's when we'll be able to actually finalize our projected revenue. We're gonna have a public hearing on August fifth and August nineteenth, and also on August nineteenth, at that point, we'll approve the budget and the tax rate. So that's what, that's all that remains.
Mr. Cox, any questions? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Cox?
Item five B, financial reports, Dr. Stockton.
Mr. Rice, if you'll come up and present the financial reports tonight?
Good evening, Mr. Husens, members of the board, Dr. Stockton. I'm here tonight to present the financial statements for the district for the month of May. These statements will include our general fund, debt service fund, child nutrition, and our self-funded insurance. The first statement we'll look at is our balance sheet. It includes our assets, liabilities, and fund balances for the district. One of the areas we always like to look at is our cash and investments. I'd just like to point out that we have sixty-four point seven million dollars invested in the general fund in our external pools. Little over a hundred million in our Capital One Now account. That accounts at twenty-five basis points. The external pool, pooled funds are anywhere from five basis points to roughly fifteen basis points. And then if you look at the, at the end, the US Treasury notes, we have about twenty-one million dollars right now that is invested out from a year and a half to three years, anywhere from forty basis points to one point ten percent, I mean, one point one percent. So, so good return on, on those.
I'm sorry, I said, give me the basis points on the pool, the Capital One Now account.
Twenty-five basis points.
And the Treasury note?
They're ranging anywhere from forty basis points to one point one.
What's that? What's the maturity on?
Well, I'll show you those and, I'll show you those in just, just a moment. Then we always like to look at our property tax collections, make sure that we're in line with where we've been in previous years. We're right, right on track where we've been. We're, we're still looking to exceed a hundred percent collections when you take into account delinquents and penalty and interest. The next statement we'll look at is our income statement. It shows our revenues and expenditures. Always like to look at our, you know, our, our second line of state program revenues. That's, that's the funding we receive from the state. But looking at our local revenues, of course, the, the largest item is our property taxes. But if we look down the list, you can see building rental, little over a million a year. Co-curricular student activities, that's ticket sales or athletic events, drama, plays, et cetera. We, we're earning close to a million dollars a year there. And then other, little over a million dollars. The biggest piece of that is our E-rate refund that we get for our dark fiber that we're putting in. It, it constitutes rebates that we get for putting in fiber that, that earns, earns these special rebates on, on those. So that's the largest piece of that. General fund balance, currently we're projecting an increase of about six point seven million. Now with the retrofit that we're gonna do with the LED lightings, that projection's gonna come down a little bit because we'll fund that out of the fund balance. No change in our projection from last month on debt service. No change in our, in our projection on the child nutrition. Self-funded insurance, once again, month of May, we had a good month for, for our insurance plan. We had total revenues of two point seven million dollars for the month of May. We had expenses of about two point five million dollars. So revenues over expenses for this month, about two hundred and forty thousand dollars, so a good month. For the year, our revenues are over expenses, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So, so on the plus side this year, as Mr. Cox said earlier, a good year. Our participation at our wellness centers, the Oak Ridge Center for the month, had four hundred and ninety-three participants. Conroe, a hundred and fourteen, for a total of six hundred and seven. So our participation in our clinics is still very strong. Our two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen bond transition plan, as you know, this is the hundred and nine million dollar bond transition plan. We have currently expended and encumbered fifty-five point three million. Our estimate to complete our projects is another fifty point two million, leaving us with a completed projected forecast of a hundred and five point five million, leaving us with some contingency of three point four million in our, in our plan. Now, as we're looking at our investments, at the end of April, we had three hundred and forty million dollars invested. At the end of May, three hundred million invested. Our pools and the Capital One account, their wham is one day to us. Those, those are liquid monies that we can get every day. Our US Treasury notes, that also now includes a few CDs and some federal home loan bank purchases that we did, but that wham is seven hundred and twenty-eight days on those.
A little less than two years.
That's what?
Yeah. But that makes our total portfolios wham, sixty-three days. When you, when you look at the weighted piece of that. Now, the year yield to maturity of our portfolio, taking all into account a little over twenty basis points. And our benchmarked ninety-eight day T-bill is about three basis points. Now, had we not made any of these changes that we've worked on over the, you know, past year, we would be around this three basis points. The pools that we were in would have us about three basis points. So right now, we're seventeen basis of points, seventeen basis points above where we would be this time last year.
Mr. Ross, any questions for Mr. Ross? Yeah, appreciate it, thank you. Okay, we do not have a need for an executive session, so we'll go to item nine legal. Dr. Stockton, consider a resolution approving the expansion and remodeling of the facilities of the Montgomery County Appraisal District.
I will turn this over to Mrs. Gladys.
Thank you, Dr. Stockton. Mr. Husens, the members of the board, as you've been pointed out to several times, Mr. Castle Shoots in the audience, to answer any questions you may have about this item. But the appraisal district is asking to expand its facilities like everything else in Montgomery County. It continues to need to expand because we're growing and growing. And so in order to do that, they have to get approval from jurisdictions within their authority. They need three quarters of them to approve, to allow them to expand. And if three quarters of them do, they can add on to their facility. And if you vote to do that, there's a resolution that we would ask you to approve tonight. Mr. Castle, it's available to answer any questions.
Welcome. Castle, we, we appreciate you and known you a long time and appreciate all you do for our county. Tell us, just tell us a little bit about how long you've been in the building, how much room you have, how much room you need.
We've actually been in the building since nineteen eighty-six. We built it new, twelve thousand eight hundred square feet. We added on in two thousand and one. And we also went out and had a study. Broadus Planning, who does studies for schools and government entities, performed a study for us and the county tax office, talking about number of employees we'd need over the coming years based upon growth, and then the amount of square footage we'd need. And the plan actually mirrored what we were saying all along. It just cost us thirty-five thousand dollars to find that out. We needed approximately thirty-five thousand square feet and we were gonna grow to approximately a hundred and twenty-eight people by the year twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-eight. We looked, by law, we have to come to every entity, that is correct. We also have to give you options. We have to show you what it would cost if we went out and purchased new land, built a new building. We presented you with information stating that would be between eight point one and eight point eight million dollars, depending upon where you built it. We also gave you information.
We also gave you information regarding a six, a ten, and a fifteen-year lease, four point two million to ten point two million approximately. That's like throwing money down the drain. We've been located where we are now since nineteen eighty-six. We're known there. We have the room to expand the facilities. We're asking to build fifteen thousand square feet of office space and expand our appraisal review board hearing rooms, and to remodel the existing building. It's aged. We're looking at LED lighting. We're looking at geothermal, uh, heating and cooling, and we're looking at a new roof. Freshen it up, and we'll be there long after I'm gone. It'll be a place the taxpayers know where to go, can come, and we'll be able to service them, uh, just as we work with your financial guys here, provide quality service and a quality product. So that's what we're asking, uh, approval of a resolution, uh, for us to expand our facilities.
Okay, just, just for the record, a couple of questions. What percentage of the three quarters of your votes, uh, does CISD represent?
Well, the cities, schools, the county, and the junior college count is one vote apiece. All the other special districts that are eligible to vote, all combined together to create one vote. Emergency service districts and the hospital districts are not eligible to vote since they do not vote for the board of directors.
So if it's one of five, one of six votes, something like that?
One out of twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, okay.
Several years ago, I came before this board and, and kind of got a, my rear end chewed a little bit. It was a little bit bigger at that time because we didn't come to Conroe first. Uh, as I explained to the board at that time, it was not my call thirteen, fourteen years ago, it is now. So we're, we're here early. I've lost thirty pounds, so my dairy air is not quite as big enough, so we're coming to you first, ask, for approval.
Okay, and the, uh, the other question I have is the amount that you're asking.
We're asking for four million dollars, up to four million. We'll still have to go out for bid on this particular project. We've worked with a couple vendors to try and firm up some numbers. Worst-case scenario, we're looking at a twenty-year note, four percent interest, up to four million dollars. We will not exceed that four million dollar figure, and it will accomplish what we need to accomplish, uh, for the facilities.
And I'm assuming since, uh, y'all have been there twenty-eight years?
Long time.
And that says you're looking to stay long-term as well?
Yes.
Any other questions, discussion? Very good. Um, and we have the resolution, uh, entertaining motion to, uh, approve or adopt?
Motion.
So move. Second, um, any other discussion? All who's in favor signify by raising your right hand, all opposed, like sign. Thank you very much, Mr. Cassisius. Thank you.
We appreciate it, and I think his five percent number is a little low on his estimate of next year's increases.
I know he appreciates that.
I gotta beat that.
And in completing our business, we have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. We are adjourned.